All right, okay, welcome everyone to the Thursday, December twenty first, ten month planning commission. Regular meeting, first order of business is to welcome and. Call to order and the next is to review the agenda, any additions or deletions? No, no, approve the minutes for the ten twelve twenty twenty three, our last meeting.
I didn't see any. Move to prove.
Second, all in favor? We guys have it, okay, so on to. The Valentine Farm LLC proposed subdivision, gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you.
So. What do we got here? Yep, big giant map. So this is a little different from your previous, our previous conversation, right?
The meeting ten months ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what has, what has changed?
It's less lots than what we proposed then.
Okay, how many lots did you propose the first time?
Believe we've had a total load ten, including the original two that are there to the east and west of.
Right, these two, yeah.
Correct, so what we proposed originally was three. But I'll call, I guess, the Capron farm and two. On the north side of the lower parcel and then one at the farmhouse site. So this was originally going to be, let me think about that, three, four, five, six, it's now four. And the western portion kind of remained exactly as we proposed it.
All right. Um, does, has everyone had a chance to review this map so far? So this is going to be a major subdivision because it has four more lots. So with that, do we all have the checklist? And this is a preliminary meeting, I think there's a couple of things that we're gonna. Ask you guys about maybe. I think driveways, house sites, that kind of thing need to come in here, need to be, we need to kind of see where everything is going. But with that, we.
Copies of the agenda and there are some copies of the. I think you guys have.
You guys have copies of the.
Um, I don't, I didn't get a copy then, no, okay, great.
All right.
I would admit it earlier.
So, um, the initial meeting with the planning commission, we've done that, presented a rough sketch, discussed, proposed, you know. Uh, zoning districts, I've got that. So it would be nice to see what all the lots, the zoning districts of the town, like where they are, these new lots are with the zoning districts that we have, is it? Ag overlay, five acre zoning, you know, just mapped out. Required steps to obtain subdivision approval, you know, you guys, I think you guys are kind of familiar with that, we no longer do the PRDs. Property lines, lot size, location, spacing dimension, dimensions of existing and proposed buildings, like I said, you know. Houses, you know, where we're gonna put them, we're gonna put the roads, the driveways, you guys have the driveway permits for two of these lots already, right?
Correct.
And then, so then it would be like, you know, like the driveway, you know, where's the cutouts gonna be for here, is it gonna be the existing driveway entry here, you know, just. When it, when you present it to us, you know.
What if we don't know the answer to that yet? Uh, so like, for example. Um, my, you know, my plan is to build the house on the property sooner than later. But the majority of the other lots there, we don't have anything set in stone for saying, hey, this is gonna be a house and this is the exact location of it. Um, we just won't know that and we might, you know, don't really intend to know that for a few years at this point.
I think maybe having a conversation with the road commissioner. Um, because there is, there's only, I mean, there's certain areas of the road that are gonna be safer than others to have a cutout. So I would say have a conversation with him and then show him your map and say, you know, these are our lots, these are the, this is the road frontage that we have, you know. Where can we put, you know, where can we put this, these driveways?
Or you could put them in as proposed.
Right.
And then if you want to, you know, for instance, you know, if this lot's gonna be accessed from one forty. That would be proposed up there as opposed to having a driveway down around here or, you know, are these two lots gonna share a driveway?
Just right, and that line is where the existing driveway.
Yeah.
A general idea, so it's proposed and then it can be amended one way or another, it does depend on the road commissioner checking it for, you need to call over it and it's.
But I mean, as far as house sites go for them.
Right. Then.
We.
Recording in progress.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You can hang up on the phone.
I would say that probably the best thing to do was come up with a proposed siding location.
Well, but he's read them right now.
Well, I know, but it says, but in our language, it says, you know, let's, you know, you know, it is the, this is the proposed. You know, seven hundred feet from the road in the form, you know, something, something so we have an I, a general idea. Now, is it gonna be, you know, cluster, are they gonna be clustered closer to, you know, just something?
Sure.
All right, uh, proposed use of buildings, you know, rural residential. Um, open spaces and wooded areas, I was actually wondering about. The, uh, Gail and I were having a discussion about why this line was like this. Uh, and she pointed out that it might be because of the hedgerow.
It, it follows.
It follows the hedgerow because it, this just looked kind of.
Probably, I think what, what we kind of settle on is it's probably about seventy-five feet south of the hedgerow. Or north of the hedgerow, sorry, so, so his line will be beyond, you know, it'll include that hedgerow.
So his line, so the hedgerow is over here and then this is actually into the field.
Exactly, but you know.
But it's following the head, that's why you, you know, that was the reason behind it.
And you need to show where the woods are and where the, where the woods are and where the meadows are.
Okay.
When you come back, just, you know, it's just a little.
Thing like.
Gotcha.
And swamps, if there, if there are any swamps.
Okay.
Class one wetlands.
Right.
I don't think it's any class one, there might be some class two.
Well, it says fragile natural areas, including wetlands, floodplains and areas, slopes greater than twenty percent, you don't have any slopes greater than twenty percent. On this property.
We might, yeah.
Might, okay.
I mean, does that need to be shown on there if the development isn't, I mean, can't we not develop up that high anyway, based on the?
Well, it is.
You could, you could ask for a waiver from showing that because.
Right.
You know, you could ask for. A waiver from that particular one saying we're not gonna have any development up there. You know, we know where it is and we just don't want.
Yeah, we're not going.
All right. Proposed private streets drive, I mean, you're not gonna do private streets, these are all.
Driveways.
Driveways, so we covered that. Proposed exterior lighting. That is actually something that we do not pay nearly enough attention to and being someone who lives with light pollution, it is, um, it's interesting. My neighbors have, you know, a commanding view and, you know, the lights are on until one or two o'clock. But. But you're not gonna, I mean, those are, that would all go along with, um, you know, how the proposed house site. All right.
It's not like this is a developed, including, and what, right?
Right.
Which is, some of these regulations.
Okay.
This is, you guys are all spread out pretty much.
If we're not clear about where we're even gonna site the house on a certain parcel, we certainly aren't gonna know what we're gonna do for exterior illumination at this point.
You know.
I, I do think, but I do think it's something, there's a, you know.
It's just, you know, you haven't, you don't, you gotta have a house design, even, which you're not gonna have for something where you don't know where you're gonna site it.
But roughly a house site would be good.
Yeah.
You know, that's what we're looking for.
This is so that you're aware of it. I mean, when we put in the town garage, there was big concern for the lights were gonna go and the neighbor, the person neighbor is so close. In this case, you might not have any close neighbors, so it wouldn't be a factor, if it was a closer subdivision locations, then it would be a factor. Or it could be, not that it would be, but it could.
Okay, so, okay, zoning districts, I think we already discussed that and the subdivision is where the subdivision is proposed, including where the zoning district boundaries on the property. You know, you've got twenty-five acre zoning up here, you've got five, eight, probably five acres owning down in here along there, you guys sort that out. I don't think you're gonna, so we've kind of already gone through the phases of development, you're not really gonna go much farther than. You know, subdividing this property conceivably.
Correct.
Uh, you know, there's gonna be one or two houses built for now and then the rest of it, it's gonna be up to whatever happens.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, there's no special considerations to be given to the town such as dealing with the land for educational and recreational purposes, no walking trails, anything like that?
Um, I mean, nothing.
Public walking trails.
Nothing that we plan out at this point, I mean, the, the public trail, I guess, I, I'm assuming it's a public trail, the hiking trail kind of runs.
Parallel to.
Parallel to the property line or a good portion of it at this point anyway.
Um, there's something else I was thinking of. Yeah, I don't think we need to do provisions for bus shelters, any other appropriate items, all right. Lot lines, houses, setbacks, oh. The right of way for the power line. So there's the three phase.
Sure.
Um, I believe that is fifty feet on either side of, and you guys would probably know that. Eighty feet total, so it's forty feet on either side, um, that would be good to have on there, just showing that, you know. Future development, you can't build within that, not that you're gonna go necessarily up there, but it would be good to have.
Okay.
Just.
Still have two hurdles.
Yeah, just, yeah, because it just goes through, it goes through, uh, two lots, these, these two proposed lots and then. All three.
Go through all three of the other ones, yeah.
Yeah, it runs from Proctor to the MB.
Yeah. Okay, so this is, you know, our second meeting, really. Fire chief to review the provisions, you're close enough to the fire chief, right? Just about there anyway. I don't think we need to have the school board review the impact of proposed development, that's not gonna. Rescue squad, again, I don't think that's applicable, road commissioner, again, get in touch with him and, you know, maybe work out some proposed, you know. Driveway locations, that would, that way, when you bring it back, you know, we've got the driveway locations and, you know, down the road, if it changes for whatever reason, you go to in front of the select board and say, this is, you know, well. And you, you have to do that anyway, anytime you do a new cut. But just that way, it's here and blah blah.
Okay.
All right, so the rest, uh, you know about, we're probably not gonna make a site visit unless anyone feels a need to, I don't, I think you got, what, half of the planning commission is probably familiar with the property anyway, so really, I mean. We probably, we probably don't need to go. All right, so the plat will be on a twenty-four by thirty-six, uh, you know that we've done one or more meetings. I don't think we're gonna require professional review, right? No, it's not that complicated. Prepare the final plat and other documents required from the planning commission, I don't think we're requir- requiring you to do anything more than the things that we kind of specified. Tonight, which is just kind of going through the checklist.
Okay.
Um, house lots, you know, uh, rural residential zoning areas, driveways. Setbacks from, um. The power line. Anything else you guys, am I missing anything? And then the rest is kind of up to us, it's the public hearing, um, submit ten copies. I think that's. About it. For tonight.
I think you need a motion to say that people hold and proceed to the. Bring the information for the hearing.
Does everyone, everyone good with their proposed seven? Yeah.
They seem nice and large.
Yeah.
You move to approve. To go to the next.
There you go. Making a motion to approve.
Before, um, just one question, in regards to kind of, I guess, putting things on the survey, house sites. Can we, you know, the, the lots to the, to the east, you know, we're probably not, you know, nothing is ever gonna happen at this point. That, you know, back towards the channel, really, it's gonna be up here.
Yeah.
And these, you know, even along here, it's probably gonna be, you know, upper side of the fields where the home sites will be, the top of this portion, can we kind of, you know. Plot those areas as far as, hey, this is the wood line, this is the house and not, you know, not worry about getting too far into.
Right.
Where things won't be developed.
When you, when you've got, you've got the twenty degree, um, your, your twenty degree slope and your power line, which is up, oh, no, I guess that's down.
It's, it's much, yeah, pretty low.
For some reason, I think it's up here. I keep going, it's like, yeah.
I, I actually think it's not even, it's probably more like, you know, here.
Yeah. Yeah, and just, you know, uh, recognize the, the wetland down here, you know, just say, this is, you know, this is not.
You can say something like potential fragile area down here, that's where, you know, it tended to be.
And you could also just right up here, you know, like mountain slope twenty degrees or greater.
Okay.
You know, and just up there, and that way, it's just kind of documented here and blah blah. Because you're initially, this is, you know, single houses on each of these lots, presumably.
Yep.
So we have a motion to approve.
To proceed.
To proceed to the next level with the instructions set forth from tonight's meeting and. We'll recon, we'll, you'll probably have this ready, but by January, next meeting maybe?
Maybe I'll talk to the surveyor and just hope that he has enough of this data at this point to just plot those things you asked for.
Um, if you do, um, we need what, fifteen days to warn a hearing?
Well, it has to be in paper fifteen days, so I've got to look and see when your, our next meeting is.
The eighteenth, so our next meeting is the eighteenth, so.
Need it.
Before.
Third of January.
Right, so it either happens or it'll happen in February.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's. Does that work?
Sure.
It's gonna have to work.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion and a vote on this?
So there's a, yeah, uh, we have, yeah, there's a second, do you have any questions, Bob?
Nope. I said, we need a second.
Oh.
I can't second, I made a motion.
All right, there's a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Will, will you also update the question marks that are here, it looked like your surveyor was latching some of the, the information.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Hi, everyone, this is Ally Jenkins, I could help with the Weskit survey. That was my grandmother, um, I don't have it handy, but it, it can be unearthed, so I can give you a date if you need that.
Yeah, that actually looks like that would, they would be appreciative of.
It's at the town. Yeah, I think, I think he has all of them, I just think he has to flip the.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Um, no, I think that's it.
All right. There we go.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
We're supposed to fold it so that I don't.
No problem. Good, bye, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the main event. Jeremy, how are you?
Okay.
We like it when they sit right up close, if you don't mind doing that.
Fancy you guys have an owl. Wow, most towns don't.
You've had it since COVID.
Yeah.
And people like to attend remotely, so.
I was asked to come talk to you guys about enhanced energy plan. Here's some flyer things. It's very.
I'm thinking, sorry, thank you for showing up tonight.
Yeah. I like that. I like that better than. Yeah. So it's not very specific information, that's just a general overview, uh, more, I think to jog your memory after the meeting than taking specific actions. And so I'm trying to remember, do you guys have any enhanced energy?
Yeah.
You do, okay. Um, so if you're familiar with enhanced energy plans, then. Is the pertinent things, did you all write it or?
Yes.
It's not a separate, it's part of our town.
Yep.
We did, we did the town plan in two thousand seventeen and then changed enhanced energy part in twenty twenty.
Okay, so the standards have changed a little bit since the last one, um, they're roughly the same. The two differences. Actually, there's one primary difference. So now. Um, in addition to all the work you did before, some of it's actually scaled back, you only need maps for solar and wind, you don't need biomass, um, maps. That makes that a little easier, um, the main difference is that there's standard ten, which is the equity impact, you have to address. Equity impact of your enhanced energy. There's a number of ways to do that. Okay, I guess.
Could you, uh, just back up, could you, could you explain the definition of the equity impact for the board?
Yeah, so that's. Basically evaluating how the. Plan itself impacts. Various people in town, it's not. Standard is, that's all of it, that, that's the standard is assess the equity impact of a plan, there's not a, a lot of detail involved in that. So I think some examples might be better than trying to explain in a, in a general way. So I just worked with Brandon to write their enhanced energy plan and this is, I feel like the hardest part for most towns to address, it's, I feel like relatively new. In the state, addressing this as an, as a concept, so one example of an equity impact. That was contentious in Brandon, sort of contentious and. I don't know where, was it brought up as a comment, um, they haven't approved their final plan yet. But one statement in the Brandon energy plan was that the energy system has been historically inequitable in that there's people who benefit from it and people who don't benefit from it and often the, the. Negative part of the energy system is felt by not everybody, but by particular people, so one example is that. In lots of poor communities, that's where coal-fired power plants exist and people get asthma and have all kinds of health problems, cancer, things of that nature. That doesn't, there's no coal fire, coal-fired power plants in Vermont causing that problem, but our energy.
There's no power plants in Vermont.
Uh, there's some, so there's a wood-fired power plant in Burlington, and maybe that's a good example and the, um. Particulate coming out of that, the stacks there, the people who live around it are the ones who feel the worst impacts of that. Not getting too much specific detail and getting lost in, in detail, so one, one way to assess the plan is assessing. Those pieces where like in Vermont, even though we don't have those plants, our energy is imported from places that do have those problems and so. Acknowledging that and addressing that and in terms of enhanced energy plans and discussing, uh, distributed generation that's locally produced, one way you can assess. Those impacts are to say, hey, if we meet our state goals, we are decreasing the amount of energy being imported from out of state from these plants are. Creating health hazards for people. And so I'm not saying that's the exact specific thing Timoth has to do, it's a hard, um. Description to give generally, so that, that's just an example of something you could do. Another thing I thought of is when you're, since you have an enhanced energy plan, you're familiar with preferred sites, I know if you all remember if preferred sites are or not, but you're basically picking the places in town. That are given increased economic value for building solar, whether the, the generator is. And so in terms of like assessing equity impact, you're basically saying, hey, these properties, we are giving a benefit to these property owners that will not give to anyone else and. I don't have a. An answer for how you would evaluate that, that's up to the town to evaluate something like that, that's another equity impact, so those are the kinds of things to think about. There's the other piece, there's the energy burden report, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but efficiency Vermont does an energy burden report. And what it does is takes the median town income. They have figured out what the energy spending is in various towns and divide the average income or the energy spending by the average income to determine. How much people are spending on energy, Tinmath is low energy burden, so you guys, it's not really necessarily an equity. Impact for the whole community, but in some communities, you have places where people are spending. I think the highest one in Vermont's like twenty percent of their income on energy for it's across transportation, heating, cooling and electricity. And so addressing that is, could be part of an equity impact, say, oh, we know there's like one part of town where. The poorest people live and they're spending the bulk of, or a significant portion of their income on. Energy and then what the town does with that is up to all of you to decide, but those are the kinds of things to think through and then report out. To in your energy plan. It's not, there's a specific, here's these things you have to account for and here's the solution, it's more squishy and difficult than say. Solar generation where there's the state targets that's broken down into regions and then the regions break it down into town, you can say, okay, our. Portion of this is whatever the number is, two megalots of solar and so we're gonna try to achieve two megalots of solar. By making space available, that's like a much easier data-driven number. Is that?
Doesn't really clear things up for me very much.
Um, well, and so part of it is, that's the kind of thing I could help you work through, is there, let's see, if I can open this here.
So I can advise you, I think I did in an email that when we did it the first time, a lot of the data that was provided by the state or whoever. We found not to be accurate for Tinmouth, I mean, we brought in our electric bills and said, this is how much we're actually spending, you know, we're not spending this much, so. Part of this whole process is we're hoping that that information is gonna be more correct than it was the last time.
Yeah, one thing that. That data is meant to be. A guide, not an exact number.
We were, we were pressed to use those as exact, exact numbers and as fact.
Yeah.
And that was, that was where we were getting pushed, we were pushing back because those numbers were not accurate and we, you know. We felt that we were looking for something that was more accurate to represent this town and there is just not.
So the town, like, for one example, with electricity, when you look, had the numbers from that, was it? Um. The electricity numbers are for the whole town, did you have? Were you looking at? The town-owned properties, like when you're saying you're bringing in.
We were bringing in our whole.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the town-owned properties are like you're sitting in one of three town-owned, I mean, we're, we're a town of six hundred people.
Yeah, I mean, I would be happy to work with you to try to figure out the best numbers, um, I, I feel like. The. Point of the plan is less to figure out an exact number and have it be more of a rough estimate. And that's something you can work into your plan and so. A lot of the numbers are. Only as good as they are. If you want full, exact numbers, you need to do a town inventory, which um. Yeah, that'd be exciting for you guys to do and you'd be welcome to do it, I don't, I wouldn't have. The RPC would not funding for me to take on doing a town inventory of what all of your energy usage is, the number that we've got that is. Believe. Very accurate is the electric. The kilowatt um usage numbers, fuel oil is harder to come by. Um, the heating, the non-electric sector things are much harder to come by. Because there's like small fuel dealers, it's like here, Green Mountain Power has all the records, those can just get transferred, that's easy enough.
They can legally do that?
I guess, I bet you'd have probably.
No, I mean, I mean, those are, those are technically private accounts, I mean.
Well, they want to give me each account in town, like they can pull out for the town, the town as a whole would be um. I have no idea who is spending what, but I could. I get a report from efficiency Vermont that has the kilowatt usage for the town. The town overall.
I have a question. I looked through, I tried to print out the other printout, screwed up. The Brandon document you sent us, Brandon enhanced energy plan. Which is, I believe, twenty-nine pages long. Which is. I think considerably longer than our exist, our Timoth's existing plan. And uh energy plan, and I'm wondering, I'm trying to get a handle. On what our goal is, what, what are we going to look like when we finish this thing? Is it going to look like Brandon? Or is it, which has lots of fancy graphics in it, among other things. Uh, we're, and it looks like a standalone document.
Yeah, Brandon did theirs as a standalone document. It's really up to the town and I can help you. Craft it how you want, um, in Brandon's, a lot of the graphics replace paragraphs of text and so that was, I keep looking there instead of.
It's really hard to look at that thing and talk about.
Just ignore it.
Yeah. So. The graphics in Brandon's. Plan were designed to remove pages of text, it. Brandon's plan was cut down by probably twenty-five percent from the previous plan. Um, my personal. Philosophy on these plans is they should be useful, they should be something anyone in town can look at and read and not just. Pages and pages and pages of data that is confusing. Um, and so. I try to get them cut down as much as possible, I think Brandon's was. Seventy pages or something like that and then. Now it's. Whatever it is, twenty or thirty, out of those twenty or thirty, I think five pages are maps, um. In terms of actual text, I bet Brandon's plan is maybe ten pages.
A little bit, I read their case was larger than ours too, so that would impact it a bit as well. But I didn't, I didn't get.
We have definitely more than ten pages of.
Oh, yeah.
We're.
I think it's more than ten pages anyways.
Yeah, it's, it's thirty pages, that's why Ed Vove said, go back to what you had before. The enhanced energy plan and you'll probably have just as much protection as if you have. These thirty pages and the same thirty pages in your town plan.
That leads us to, I mean, before we get into the next, I mean, so we talked about.
I'm just trying to open your plan right now.
We, we talked about equity, which I'm not entirely sold on it in general. So the question, the, the question that we have is if we do nothing. If we remove the enhanced energy plan. Um, we, we had this conversation with Ed because, you know, we don't like the numbers, we don't necessarily want to. That, we don't necessarily want to go into this, into this whole thing if we don't need to. Um, what are the, I mean, are there concrete advantages to having? Uh, an enhanced energy plan that like you can cite, like, you know, this town had this energy plan and was able to navigate through. Or is it just, you know, the. Uh, public utilities just pretty much still doing whatever.
So, yeah, that's.
Without us having a, you know, I mean, we, we barely get a, a foot in the door at the table. We still don't, we're still not, we're heard in a dis, hypothetically in a decision-making process, but we don't get to make any decisions. So what actual advantage is having the advance, the enhanced energy plan going to do us?
Yep, so. There's a couple things, I view, there's two main things, so. One thing is. For the, they're tied together, so they're, they're not two completely different things on explaining now, um, there's overlap. So. The, it can be used to. Plan your town and develop your town the way you want, I feel like that's my focus on trying to help people write energy plans is that. Our. Infrastructure in our world is fundamentally changing and there's a lot of development going on and so the town. Can use an energy plan to help. Think through that process of how the town wants the town to look. And how the town wants to develop longer. When you then take that idea into the PUC hearings and the legal um weight that your plan has. An enhanced energy plan gives you called substantial deference to the PUC versus an energy chapter gives you um. Due consideration. And so in. PUC hearings, like one. The, the reason substantial deference came about is because of a um, a citing issue, I don't remember when it was, two thousand fourteen, something like that, that went. To the Vermont Supreme Court and they um. They basically ruled that substantial deference does not carry a lot of legal weight. Um, and so legislature created this enhanced energy planning process to give towns more. Legal weight within a section two forty-eight PUC citing hearings. And so. The trade-off, what you're basically doing is saying, yeah, the town's going to meet the state goals, but we're going to do it in the way that. We're going to be in the driver's seat in terms of determining. How the town develop, how these things develop within the town. And so. In terms of uh PUC cases in the region. The most recent one with an enhanced energy plan. I don't think Castle.
Was there one that failed, uh, wasn't there one somewhere that had an enhanced energy plan and it still didn't uh? It made little difference in front of the board?
Well, it's.
I think that's in Stanford, Stanford?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Which one you're talking about and it's also. Don't think it's as simple at, like the, the quality of the plan makes a difference, so you could meet. Do the bare minimum to meet all the enhanced energy plan requirements. And you're, could have an enhanced energy plan that's not in line with your regional plan and then if that went to a PUC hearing, that's going to be different than if you have like a. Like you've done your best job at an enhanced energy plan and it's in line with the regional plan. So. I think. You can't just cookie cutter say. Enhanced energy plans one hundred percent do this and energy chapters one hundred percent do that. It's a matter of weight and so an enhanced energy plan will give you more legal weight than an energy chapter. How that interacts with the, I mean, it, the section two forty-eight hearings are going to have. It's a quasi-judicial board that's reviewing facts and making decisions. Based on a number of metrics, but it's, it's like any court case where it's not just. Cut and dry. This is the same as that, it's why we have courts because one person could do the same thing as someone else, but the circumstances surrounding it could be different, so. You might have different results and that's not a very satisfying answer to all of you, I'm sure, um, but this. Gets you farther down the road to having, an enhanced energy plan gets you farther down the road to having more. Um, weight within that proceeding, so if you have an enhanced energy plan that's in line with your regional plan and based on. And tied into your town plan, then I think you're in a very good place versus if your town plan is. Just garbage and you have an enhanced energy plan that doesn't reference a bigger concept within the town. Then. You're not going to have as. Good of an argument to make to the PUC and so, or if you bless things in your enhanced energy plan that are just not allowed. So there's certain things within enhanced energy plan you just can't do, it's not within the town's. Jurisdiction to make rulings that the PUC is making, so if you're trying to make a rule that supersedes state rules in your enhanced energy plan, just go through just because it's an enhanced energy plan. And so that's where it comes down to that. Quality of the plan and the circumstances surrounding that, so if this town. So, um. Tinmath has a well-developed town plan and a direction they want the town to develop it and then enhanced energy plan it references. These are the things that we value about our town, here's our various um resources that we want to protect.
And we do and we have, we have, we have pages of that.
Yeah, and so if you're pointing to something like that, that then the energy plan is enhancing. Then I think you have a much better um. Weight. And like argument to make before a um citing hearing at the PUC than if. Some of the town plans I've seen. They've just like made up rules and regulations that are not within their jurisdiction to make and so if something like that were to go to the PUC. Like if you were to say, no one can put up uh. Any solar panels anywhere in town in your enhanced energy plan, no, it's, that, that's not going to um. Be protected, the, the PUC is going to say, no, this is just not within your capacity. If you say, we have designated these sites as our preferred sites and we designated, say, there's a view shed you want to protect and. Sites that would interfere with that view shed. Are. Not allowed to be developed, that's going to be taken more seriously, if you, basically if it's well thought out and you're saying, yeah, we are going to meet state goals, we have places set aside to be able to allow that kind of. Development and we have places set aside to protect from that development, then I think that's going to be taken seriously.
Well, I think we have more, we have lists of historic and scenic views that we as a community are more interested in preserving. Than finding, you know. A, because, I mean. Finding a suitable location or, you know, because I don't, I don't think we have a whole heck of a lot of preferred um. Solar site.
Have more of, you know, you can't do it here just because it doesn't meet the wind, it doesn't meet the solar, it doesn't.
For the rural nature of our town, for the, like, the unique characteristics of this community, you know, there are, there are disadvantages to putting in. Wind towers, solar, you know, solar farms, this and, and I think we've, we did a, I think we did a. Oh, what? Yeah, I think it did enough of expressing that.
Right, I think we, we did, came up with constraints. And Bob was our mapper and you put all the constraints together and you end up with, you know, a little place here and a little place there.
We have, I mean.
Constraints are all legitimate.
Yeah.
It's the second most conserved um town in the state. So there's a lot of property that is either in current use or just has conservation easements all, I mean, it's just. So like, and then the middle of the town is literally a swamp. So, no, I mean, there's just, there are just, and then, so then you have, like, you have so, you just have so many limitations already to, and we don't have three phases, I mean.
Right, so you're probably not going to get a whole lot of development.
We're not going to get a whole lot of development.
Yeah, once all the other places. Who knows, I mean.
Killer is.
Think of it that way is. You know, right now, there's not a lot of pressure, but twenty years from now it might be.
Well, this is.
The things to think through is like. So once the grid capacity is um used up in the other like low-hanging fruit areas in the state. And then it's okay, we need to start adding substations and capacity somewhere. Is Tinmath going to be high on that list, low on that list, I don't know, like, I can't predict the future.
So I, I have a question regarding that, um, because it seems like, you know, we're.
Can, can I repeat really quickly, sorry, just to go back to the last thing we were talking about before moving on to something else before I forget, I think this is really important that. I think the strongest plan you're going to have to give you the most um. Control over how things are cited is to definitely put this is where we want things to happen, plans that just say. This can't happen here, this can't happen there, like. If it doesn't provide a, this is where something can happen. Then I think. If the developers at, in, at a hearing for the PUC would say, well, they're just trying to block it from going in everywhere and so. If you do have places you can say yes, here's a yes, then you can point to that. To protect those places that are a no, and I think you have a very strong argument because you're not, if you just say. No, 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 no. I think, and like, I'm not a PUC commissioner and. Who knows what they're going to say in any particular hearing, but. They don't have a, something to point to, to tell. A developer, well, the town is saying yes here, so like, why aren't you asking to develop there? Versus if. Developer goes into a hearing and says, well, this town is saying nothing's open for development, then um.
That, I mean, that unto itself actually should be pretty persuasive language to a court. Um, you know, if the majority of this area is conserved to a certain extent, I mean, that is an underlining, that's an underlining current within the town that. It is not necessarily interested in that type of development. That, that in it, into itself should actually, you know, carry some weight, you know, just.
Right, yeah, I mean.
In theory, it should, I mean.
Yeah.
Courts being what they are, it's.
Well, we have a whole lot of zoning, we have a whole lot of zoning regulations also, which have a history. And they aren't arbitrary.
No, um.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, and you can, like, you don't have to put in. This is where we do want things, I'm just saying, I think that would make a stronger plan and give you more protection.
Um, so.
Think that's a lot. Yeah.
So I was, um, I, I've been really wondering and speculating about this, you know, we are, we're putting, we're putting massive amounts of infrastructure into solar farms. Across the state. Um, you know, and to me, that doesn't seem like, you know, the, the wisest choice for our energy needs. From your perspective, is there anything, is there any talk about, you know. Doing something along the lines of, you know, actually having like a. A different type of energy source other than just wind turbines and solar power, something on like larger scale, like nuclear or. Something that is going to actually generate, you know, reliable, dependable energy for an extended period of decades as opposed to. Like the ten and fifteen-year payoffs that solar panels are, I mean, at, at some.
Well, they produce their, most of them are warranted for like. What is it? Uh, twenty-five years and typically the lifespan is forty years on most of them. Um, not, I'm not being argumentative.
Yeah, I mean, but you know, it is like, I spent a lot of time with, with people with solar and, you know, nothing lasts for forty years, I mean, it's. Um, but it just, you know, to me, it seems like, you know, this is, we're looking at this now for five years down the road, we start looking, you know, we start stretching it seven to ten years down the road and twenty years down the road. You know, are we really going to have, you know, are we really going to flood our state, I mean, this is my question to, you know, just everyone. Um, are we going to, are we going to flood ourselves with so many solar parks and farms and that's the way that we are going to use electricity, I mean, to me, that doesn't seem. Realistic.
I mean. I can't give you an answer to what's going to happen in twenty-five, thirty years, I think. One thing I think about that I'm going to work into the regional plan that I find really important is basically using less energy, I think that's more crucial than. Producing now. Producing electricity and more fuel variants and so. Something that I think. Is great for towns to focus on is you can do more thermal networks and I am really pushing the idea that. Instead of meeting. State goals through. Creating more electricity. Let's try to meet those goals through finding other fuel sources like you were saying. And so like geothermal, solar hot water. Um. For this town, those will probably be the two. There's also like. Other heat recovery systems that you can use. So if you have a wastewater facility, you can recover the heat. So when you. Are on town water and sewer. Something like uh twenty five percent of all. Home. Energy uses for heating water and then it's literally getting flushed down the drain. You can recover that water. So. What I would propose or suggest to towns who don't want to have more solar and wind. Is to meet those goals through thermal, so like geothermal and solar hot water and getting that energy. Um, in those ways. And so that is one option for. So let's say this town, I'm going to use made up numbers that are just really easy for the sake of conversation here. Let's say this. That Tinmouth overall uses. Ten kilowatts of energy for everything that goes on in town. And then the idea. Has been, okay, well, we need. Ten kilowatts of capacity of solar and wind. So what I would say is that instead of that, you you look at it and say, okay, well, how much of our energy is for heating and cooling? Let's say that's. Uh. Proportionally, this would actually be roughly accurate, four and a half. Kilowatts or so would be heating. So instead of. Putting in four and a half kilowatts of solar wind. Putting in. Thermal systems, solar hot water or geothermal, that would be the equivalent of those. Four and a half watts. And then those things you typically don't, so geothermal, you don't see, it's like out of sight, out of mind, it's all buried. Solar hot water. Those are panels people would put on their houses. You don't tend to have, it's not like a solar hot water farm like the solar. Total optake uh multiple acre things, so. Solar hot water panels, if you were to put one on your house, as long as you had decent sun or you could mount them on the ground. Near your house um. It's usually about. One or two panels to do all your domestic hot water heating with those. And so. You would see those solar panels, but that's.
Um, with the geothermal, when you still need to heat it another way, because I don't want to wash my dishes in sixty four degree water.
No, so geothermal systems, they're basically heat pumps. Are you familiar with like the mini split heat pumps?
But don't those still take electricity to actually run?
Yep, they take electricity around. And so geothermal.
Lot less.
Takes electricity.
It does. So what happens is the, there's a thing called the coefficient of performance, which is. How much energy you put in versus how much um work you get out. And so you're like mini split, those are air source heat pumps. Those are like a coefficient performance around two. So for every. One unit of electricity you put in, you get two units of heating capacity or cooling capacity up. With uh geothermal, which is a ground source heat pump. That's a coefficient five. So for every one unit you put in, you've got five units of heating out. And so. Even though it uses electricity, you need those for. Kilowatts of um energy to heat normally. You would need a fifth of that using a system like that. So you're taking. Four of those, if it's five that are coming out and one going in, you're taking four of those units. Out of the generation side of. Energy. I mean, it's. Technically being generated by the ground, but so you're not using directly the water that's coming out of the ground. There's a heat exchange that's going on there. And it. Like geothermal will not work every, in every single situation. It's a mix of all of these things, but that's one way to take some of that. Um, generation away. And so like focusing on efficiency. Weatherization and then um adding in thermal networks are pieces, pieces of the puzzle. But those pieces of the puzzle are like you were saying. Not increased generation. And so those might, those take land base, um, geothermal, there's a number of ways it can happen. It can be expensive. Put in initially, but then it runs for like. Uh. Forty years, I think, is what those are usually warranted for in their systems now. People have been around for fifty years and there's no problems with them and there's very little. Operation maintenance, like over the life of fifty years winds up being much cheaper than. Other. Uh, than alternative sources. Um. However, there's like a lot of excavation or boreholes, things like that that. Make that price really high start. And so. It's all just like pieces of a puzzle. I think what I'm trying to convey is. I would love to work with the town. I'm trying to figure out how to fit those pieces of the puzzle together and what would work best for the town and what you all. How you all think you'd want to develop that. Um, and where you want to see your town going.
So in in terms of um. If we decide to go with the enhance, with an enhanced energy plan, we've talked about an equity. Component that would have to be met, which. May or not, may or may not work out. Um, what are the other new requirements that are? Being presented to.
That's about it. The others, there's like they removed some things.
So having an equity, having an equity statement of some sort is literally the only thing that we're going to have to do.
Well, all that, so. Have to do in terms of.
Complying with.
Comparing to your old plan.
Carrying it to the old, I mean, we can use our own plan. We can, we can drop our old plan in and we are. We have been told that it would, it would suffice to do everything that we want, that we would still. You know.
Just need the updated numbers, but yeah.
Yeah, the updated number. At least that's, that's what Ed presented us with.
I would not do that. Um. I think the plans can be. Better than they were. And I, I would. I did a lot of work with Brandon on our existing plan. I would reference that for the differences between the the. Um. Previous. Plans and the current plans. I think part of it is formatting it so it's more readable. For your average person in town, so like a lot, almost all the old plans I've seen, I can't. Read so many of these, I can't remember Tinmouth right now.
So I I wouldn't, I'm not necessarily interested um in making this readable for. Uh, the the average person in town. I I think that it would be readable for, you know. A judicial poor that if something ever gets presented. This document is here for them to read and understand, not for necessarily people in the community.
Well, I would like to take issue with that, Mr. Chair. I would think what we want to do is plan for. How people can be more energy efficient. And not worry so much about public service board.
Uh, the the entire reason.
They're gonna do whatever they want to do anyways, but if we can make the plan readable so that people can look at it, understand what a heat pump is or. You know, how much.
No, no, that's, that's not why, that's not why we uh initially went for the enhanced energy plan. The enhanced, we went for the enhanced energy plan, so we would have some. Type of protection or at least some. Ability to have a voice in a conversation if. There was ever a like major development of solar or wind. It wasn't, it was never designed, it was never intended for. People to, if people want to learn about, uh, you know, heat pumps or, you know, turning off like light switches, like, that's great, but I don't think that that's. What the enhanced energy plan is supposed to be doing.
I would push back against that. I don't think it's to be a zero sum game of one or the other. I think you can do both and I would recommend. You should do both. And that speaks to that um equity aspect too, is that. Energy historically has been. Regulated in. What I'll call the like wealthy old boys club. So like the the same concerns you're having about the P U C doing whatever they want. I think that's based on history of like. Decisions being made by people you can never talk to about things that are presented as so complex, you can't understand them. And then things get pushed through that, have been historically pushed through that way. And so I think that. Making things accessible. That could be a piece of your equity assessment is that you're making your plan accessible to everyone in town.
Well, that's, the state is literally doing that same detail by forcing us to uh. Put in an equity component. Which equity and, you know, I. I'm having some issues with the term equity. And like. Having an actual real definition of what this means to the state. Um, because we are not, I mean, we are not equitable, like there's nothing, there's nothing about our society that is equitable, and I don't think that we should be pushing. An energy plan that is pretending to be equitable.
I don't think you should pretend, sorry.
I was just gonna say. Um, but yeah, we may not be equitable, but this is part of trying to get there.
No, that's, I mean, so again, that's where I would like a a better definition of what the state is asking for when it says. An equitable component to our energy plan. And, you know, when we're talking about people, you know, we're talking about like, what type of people are we talking about?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna open the standard.
Yeah.
Well, and that's for you to decide. That's why the definition isn't so. Prescribed, because all areas are different. And so like. The equity. Issues in Tinmouth are not the same as the equity issues in Winuski.
But if the state is going to look at the equity equity issues, you know, you you have to have a standard somewhere. And so they can't, they can't look at the word equity and look at, they're not going to know what the equity standards in Tinmouth. Are in relation to the equity standards anywhere else. So they're going to use a their own definition of what equity is to them. Throughout the entire state. I mean, that's why it can't be wishy washy. We can't, you know, we can't be using definitions that don't have um that don't define anything.
Right, well, that, that's what I'm saying. It would be up to the town to define.
Right, but then it it would be up to the state to accept that definition.
Well, it's not a definition. You'd be defining. Not defining the word equity, you would be defining. The equity impacts of your plan. And so you're looking for a definition.
So what, what's the definition of the equity impact from the state's perspective? I mean, I want to hear, I want to hear what the state says and then we go from there. Because equity is, as you, I'm sure.
The Brandon plan has. My, the Brandon plan has. Um, two pages. On the equity. Analysis. This this page, these two pages are. Uh, and they don't. Talk about. Figures, facts and figures. They they just say, are saying. The signer of the Declaration of Inclusion, Bran is committed to ensuring all residents receive fair and equal treatment. This concludes the world that I'm, I'm sorry that my computer left, skipped a line here. Should have. And they should be protected from dilatory effects of energy production and distribution. And share equally in the distribution of the benefits. It's. That seems a reasonable. Reasonable statement to me.
I've got the exact standard here. I'm sorry, were you done? I didn't mean to interrupt you if you weren't.
Yeah, no, I'm done. I'm just, I said, I think I I don't, I'm not as. Wound up about the bird equity as my colleagues.
So the standard says, does your plan's energy. Element assess the potential equity impacts of the policies and objectives included to meet standards six through nine. Six through nine are your like, how do you meet your thermal electric and transportation state targets?
Who has the state met any of its targets?
Uh. Yeah, I don't know.
I could the last that I knew that we had not, as a state, we had not met any of our targets.
It's depends how you wanted to find things.
Well, I mean, it's, this is, you know, this is what I'm getting at, is, you know, we're making, we're making a a document that when you look back in history. If we are using data or we're doing things, you know. The only way that people are going to um. Understand our perspective is if we are using accurate data and accurate words and language. If we are just making general concepts and, you know, that that doesn't help. Because it's by looking back, you know, it's it's always by looking back, are we that, are we going to assess the situations at the present? You know, it's when the board looks back at what, you know, when, when a public utilities. Commission is looking, they're looking back at the work that we have done and the information that we have presented, if it is not factual to this town. But, you know, that's not going to do us any good and it's not historically going to do anyone any good either.
Well, also if we're trying to meet something that's unattainable. Which I think some of the state standards are unattainable for the timeline that they've laid out.
Yeah, that, once again, I feel like you have to dig into the specifics on that. Um.
And I think we should.
I think the plan is the place to do that. So like right now, we could just have a debate all night about all kinds of like. Rotating specific aspects of a plan. Now, I'd like to keep this conversation more focused on the big picture. Um, I can give you one example. It's also the more you look at something, the more um. Big it can become. And so. All of a sudden you get into like. There are not necessarily. Platonic ideals, like there's not necessarily completely factually correct information that nobody disagrees with unless you're doing math. Like math's the only place that. One plus two is always going to equal three.
But a lot of that, a lot of the information, the data is math.
Well, but now it depends how you count things too. So that's where you get into these problems of details. So Green Mountain Power right now is um. One hundred percent renewable. And they're shooting for one hundred percent carbon free by twenty thirty two, and they're on track to meet those goals. Based on the parameters that they're defined in. And so different people agree or disagree with how those are defined. And so that's where. That's where it goes back to the town defining what it wants for the town. And I would take it out of the idea of like the state's making you do anything and use this as an opportunity. To say, how do we want our town to look? What do we want to do for our town? How can we like benefit people in town? And then it's something. You have agency over and you're deciding rather than. Having it be a punitive action that you are obligated to do by the state.
Because that's, that's what we are, that was, that's why we did this. It was, you know, we are obligated by the state to do this.
Well, and that's why I would argue to redo the plan from what it was previously, and I would.
The energy plan.
Yeah, the energy plan. And I would strongly suggest slipping the mindset into how can we benefit our town? That's really my focus is like. How do we benefit towns? How do we help people who live in towns? And sure, there's a whole world out there that influences that. And the best thing to do is to start in your town and say, okay, how do we benefit everybody in the town? And there's a lot of ways to do that. Um, and you can do that through this development if you're. Ultimately, long term, this development is going to happen. I think whether you like it or not, the world's changing. So it'd be like. Being alive a hundred and fifty years ago and saying. I'm against cars, I'm like stopping cars from coming into my town and focusing any on horses.
Well, I, I think you're, I I don't think you're quite understanding. I mean, we we absolutely, the world is changing and we absolutely have. A voice and we have the ability to. Alter the the trajectory. I mean, we have that power even as a small little board, because there's lots of small little boards and. You know, it does not necessarily, um, we do not have to be mandated by the state to tell us what to do. For what the state tells us should be in the best interest of our, of ourselves and our citizens. You know, we're all here as a volunteer board because we want to improve. You know, the na, the the community in this town and make it better for people. The. Energy aspects of this are, the state is. Is having us do this for a reason. And if the reason is to show that we are equitable or reasons why we are equitable, which is, you know. Again, I would like to see like a justification for that, you know.
There's, so I never, I never have finished the rest of that description. And I would, the state's not making you do this. It is your choice to go with an enhanced energy plan or not. It's a, like I said, it's a trade off.
If we don't, if we don't do it, then we don't get our, our, our town plan approved.
No, your town plan would be approved. You could do an energy chapter instead of an enhanced energy plan. You have that option. And then. There's. A legal weight. Is different between the two. Is different between the two things, but it is ultimately up to you, like no one's saying anyone has to do anything in this. Like to take it out of that idea of the states doing this to the town. Typically, all of these developments are, it's private land, it's not the state buying land and the state putting in the development. It's local landowners who get financial benefit from selling a lease or a. An easement for land to a developer to build something. And so. I I think it's not gonna um.
So go ahead with the the equity, the the list.
So the example, so the definition was, or the standard is, does your plan's energy element assess the potential equity impacts of. The policies and objectives included to meet standards six through nine. And then the description is such as. Uh, such an assessment could consider. For example, what communities will be most impacted by the policies or objective? The distribution of benefits and burdens related to specific actions, whether actions will address existing inequities. Or the extent to which communities were or will be consulted in development of any programs or actions. And so my take on this is basically reaching out to people in town and making the process. Open and available to people in town. And getting input from people in town, specifically the people who. Historically have not had input.
Everyone has had the opportunity to have input. I mean, it's an open meeting. I mean, you can, I mean, that's, this is where people come to voice an opinion. Is at a meeting.
To an extent, so like one. This came up in Brandon and one way, I think an example of this is before the Americans with Disability Act. You could have someone who is in a wheelchair, for example, and they had the ability to go to an open meeting, but that open meeting in some buildings was up. Two flights of stairs with no access, so like. Sure, they could go, but. Functionally, they couldn't go. And so like, if you hold a meeting. Always at seven o'clock on this night, and there's someone who works second shift. On this night, they can never go to the meeting. And I'm not. I'm not saying this town is doing something wrong. I think it's a more general thing. And that's kind of what this is trying to get you to think about is. How do you make things? How do you think about those things we haven't been thinking about for a long time in terms of, oh? It hadn't occurred to me that like, there's second shift workers who can't ever attend our meetings and.
But how does that translate into energy?
Well, that's making the plan available to people. And so writing a plan that's at a um, a level anyone could read it, making it formatted in a way that's understandable. Uh, it's, and once again. This is, this is the part that's up to the town to decide. It's not for me to come here and tell you guys, this is what you need to do to make. Your plan equitable. It's really the idea that you would brainstorm and think, so like, I'll give you some examples of what Brandon did is. Some of the things they were thinking about. And so one of those things was. How do they reach more people? They have a lot of energy events. Brandon is a very active energy committee, and that energy committee holds events side of time. And. They have determined to start holding those events at different hours, so it's not just always the same time. Um, I think another, so in terms of the like. Acknowledgment of inequity, part of that would be acknowledging that the system is currently. Set up for the highest functioning people in a community, not the people. That are highest functioning with the most resources and the um. This goes beyond energy. I think it's town government, state government, local government is typically not set up. For the people with the lowest capacity and the fewest resources. And so trying to think through. Who are the people with the lowest capacity and the fewest resources? And how do we engage them in the process? That's I think. The idea of this of equity and equity impact.
But the people, but those people are typically people that are not going to uh. Care to be involved in such endeavors to begin with. Just giving them the option to show up or the wheelchair accessible ramp to show up is, I mean, that's. I mean, there there's some flaws here that, you know, I think are going to, like statewide are going to unfurl over time.
Rainbow has a comment.
Yeah.
Um, just looking at the time, I'm just curious, I feel like we're getting into debate rather than kind of looking into um. Yeah, moving forward with decisions, so I'd be curious um. Just as we have you here, if there's anything else that we wanna. Any other questions or um. How to round round out. I need to go home soon.
Well, what's the next step?
Yeah, maybe that's a good question, yeah.
Should we read Brandon's plan and come with comments on that as to?
We could, I mean, I again, I think, you know, tying the term equity into. An energy plan, I think is fraught with um. But I think it's troublesome, and I don't think it, I don't, I honestly don't think that it it reflects well on. The best use of a community, like. Not the best use of a community's resources, but um. You know, if we're gonna talk about energy, if the town is gonna talk about energy, then, you know, top, using. Equity and energy, you know, I I don't think that these, I don't think that they mesh very well, and I think the state is. Asking us to do something that, you know. We're we're forcing things together that really aren't going to work really. I mean, we can make up a lot of. We can make up a lot of standards and this and that, but ultimately, I don't think that. You know, people's energy needs need to be connected to the the opinion or the concept of equity. Because equity as, it's still, there is an open de- a definition, it seems, to, you know, what is going to be equity for Tinmouth. Is going to be, is going to be entirely different for an entirely different community. And I think that that is, I think that's a very, that's a a troublesome concept that. I'm, you know, we don't have to discuss any more of it tonight, that's fine, but.
Yeah.
Why don't?
I'm wondering how um, kinda work with something. I mean, equity, I. I guess there's maybe there's more definitions to equity than just what we're seeing being talked about. Um, I think wellization. For some, it's very true, a lot of people will not come, will not do anything, but they'll complain the most. About something, but I think sometimes like weatherization in the houses. Is very good for somebody, maybe on the low economic thing, or somebody is gonna put up a new facility and they want to get. Most efficient machines or whatever else. You've got both spectrums down there. One could use a lot.
I think Viva had a comment too.
I I think we should just review the the plan than Brandon and see. Page that, how they relate equity into their plan. And see if we could make some sense of it.
Shorter it apparently is than ours.
Uh, that's what I was getting at, is how much do we, can we shed from the old energy plans? I mean, are we?
I don't know, I'd have to go through it.
But just in general, I mean, the state said that we can, you know, that that we're no longer going to be.
No, there's some of the mapping standard, you need fewer maps.
Fewer maps for um, citing for solar and biofuel.
The, yeah, so biofuels is not on the earth anymore, it's just solar and wind.
So it's just solar. Everything else has gone to the wayside.
No, you also need, depends how you wanna do it, but um. You need existing generation.
Which we have none.
Solar and wind. Right, so then here you could work that into one of those maps really easily.
The Rutland, Jeremy, the Rutland Regional is rewriting, they're rewriting their plan too. They're bringing their plan up to date. And going back to two thousand seventeen. Uh, the regional plan at that time. Said absolutely no. Industrials, wind industry in the county, essentially it said that. Is that gonna change, do you think?
I don't see that changing now.
Yeah, so we don't have to really. Get get all tiresels into knots knots about that. Because Timoth mountain has been on state map saying this is a wind energy resource.
Makes sense.
Nuclear power makes sense.
I'm just saying, sorry, the wind blowing up there, it blows up there.
And and so the process with the regional commission is you're willing to help us do this, is there gonna be a cost to the town, or is it part of?
Right, so the town, I'm.
Is there a grant we could apply?
There's a grant.
Saw that in the email chain.
Yeah, so you could apply for the MRP mini grant. Which takes about three minutes to apply for, and everyone's applied that I've been working the last few days gets their approval like the next day. Um, and then that can be used to contract RPC, do the enhanced energy plan of the town. And there'd be no cost to the town. The grant would basically cover the cost of doing the enhanced energy plan.
I think we need to do that. How how, you say it's a simple application process?
Yeah, there's not even a space to put a sentence on it. There's like some boxes you check, you write the name of the town, you write the name of the person applying. You write the project director name, which can be the same as the person applying. The hardest part of the whole application is you'd have to have the tax ID number for the town. Which is typically not that big of a deal. Um, if you do apply, there's a particular box that you wanna, a couple of boxes you wanna check for the use. Whoever applies, if someone does apply, can contact me and I can make sure you check the right boxes. I can tell you right now, but it's. Uh, technical assistance. And then in brackets says says non-MRP. And then flyers and community meeting, you check those three, it'll cover anything you could possibly need.
We need somebody to fill that form out.
Well, I'm not sure that we necessarily, I mean, do we wanna go down this route? I I'm not entirely convinced um. I wouldn't mind reading the Brandon. And then, I mean, I I have some serious reservations about um. The enhanced energy that the state is pushing forward. Um, I do, and I'm.
Right, but I I this grant isn't guaranteeing that you're gonna do a plan. I think the grant lets you explore. How you do it, and if you should do it, and in the end, there'll be a decision whether you're gonna go forward, is that?
Well, I think we're, I think we're exploring what we, if we want to pursue, and that's what I'm asking you guys, do you want to pursue this? Do you want me to apply for the grant so we can pursue this with the help from the regional commission or? Do we?
That's what the grant pays for. The grant pays for help from the regional commission. I think we've had, we've had grants, I think almost every time we've redone the. The plan.
Make a motion to have him apply.
Motion.
Wasn't a cherry?
Motion for Michael to apply for the grant.
My question was, how long do you have to apply for things? Long as it helps.
How long do you have to apply?
Let's say you wanna apply before.
The New Year's?
September.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have some time.
So could we just look at the Brandon plan and revisit it?
Well, so there's a, there's a motion on the floor. Um.
Bob seconded it.
Before you guys vote, can I just say one clarifying thing? Um. In terms of the. Assessing whether you'd wanna write a plan versus writing a plan, the grant would cover my time to write the plan. It wouldn't cover my time to like, help you. Assess, I could do one or the other. I mean, you could use it for either case. But I I would, it would take more of my time than the grant would pay for to do both of those things. Like, I couldn't meet with you. For six months regularly. Get all the details worked out and then have the time additionally to write the plan.
I think we are.
Scenario, how does the part time, how does the plan get written?
When we want the grant or not.
So Jeremy, how, you you just described a process of your coming and meeting with us for six months. And then the plan is written, who does the writing of the plan, the final draft?
Yeah, I was saying, I wasn't saying the process is meeting with you for six months. I'm saying, as an example, I couldn't spend a lot of time just meeting with you to talk about plans in general. And then also have the budget to write it. But so if I, if you were to grant to contract me to write the plan, I'd write it. I would do it. I would meet with the town. Get your ideas all compiled and then formulate those into the plan. They, I would like gather the data, get all the like statutory requirements. And then based on what you all prefer and how you want your town to look and develop, I would work that into a plan. Give you a draft, you would make comments on that, I could change the draft. Um. I don't know how many, like. I can't say exactly how many revisions would be allowed within the budget. I would let you know, was like if, if there were only a couple revisions. Then, sure, that's easy enough, that would fit in the budget, but if it was. Having or revised the plan twenty five times, that's probably not gonna be within the scope of a budget, so. Um.
Well, I guess, how, I mean, how much different would it be from our current plan?
I'm not sure. So I'm not familiar enough with the.
Well, we'll always hold off and wait till next month. Everybody has just looked at the Brandon.
And and would you have time to review our plan and then maybe email Gail with comments as to. How much effort it would take if we pursued this route?
I could. Um. Skim the plan.
Okay.
And give you like a very rough estimate, I couldn't like.
Yeah, that's all I was looking for is you, you know, it's gonna. You either need to rewrite seventy five percent of it, or we just need to plug in new numbers.
Well, once again, it's up to the town, like I have recommendations I made, but it's really up to. All of you to decide what you wanna do. You could tell me, we want us to be exactly the same and change the numbers. Um. That's what I'll do if that's what the town wants. So a lot of the things I've said are recommendations to try to help meet your needs um. And it's ultimately.
Well, I think it would be helpful if you read the plan, the energy section of the plan as it exists. And make recommendations of areas that you think need to be changed. The the maps, there are, I think, four or five maps in the existing plan. Uh, the Brandon plan has about the same number of maps. But. I think the RRPR RPC map maker would do those.
Yeah, that would be part of the uh, process.
So there is still a motion on the floor um, for me to apply for this grant. I would. Possibly say that we could perhaps table that motion until next meeting when we've read the Brandon. And maybe Jeremy could quickly skim through our energy plan and give the roughest of, I think. You know, the whole thing needs to be done, or you know, you can get away with this, this and that and adding that. Um. And we could just, we could bring it back to the table, or we can have a vote on it right now. If you want, I mean, it doesn't, we have until September of twenty twenty four. So like June of twenty twenty four would probably be. Our latest that we would commit one way or the other.
When is your plan? That's actually the thing to decide based on when your plans do.
September of twenty five.
Yeah, so. Would you be doing your whole town plan on its own?
We already have.
We've done a bunch of it.
This is the, this is the very tale, this is the last element of.
We we still have some revisions to it, but we haven't gone through all of it. Most of it would add, and we just left the energy off because. It was.
We have questions.
And it's.
And it's.
We're supposed to be getting new numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's twenty twenty five, you said?
September.
September, so yeah, you have a bit of time.
We have, we have quite a bit of time.
I think we should table the motion and and. He could review our plan and we could look at the Brandon plan.
So that's a, that's a second motion that you'll have to, you'll have to get. Our Kim and Bob, do you like that proposal?
Which proposal?
That we table the current uh, proposal for me to apply for the grant. Until we've all read Brandon's town plan, and Jeremy has quickly done a very. Quick read through of our energy plan and just given us a a little, you know. Thirty thousand view, you know, what it would, you know, entail. Until next, until next meeting. Cuz we do seem to have some time.
I I wonder why wait?
Well, I'd like to read Brandon's uh, town plan and I would, you know.
If you read towns, Brandon's town plan. If you read towns, Brandon's town plan and you decide what, not to apply for the grant?
We may not want to apply for the grant. I mean, this isn't, this is an ongoing discussion.
Alright.
Or I can put the motion to the floor and we can vote on it. That's fine.
So there was a a motion to table it.
There was a motion to table it, but no one seconded it.
I'll second it.
Alright.
The table, well, yeah, okay.
Table until next month?
Okay.
So there's another motion on the floor that we will table the a previous motion until next month and we, when we have all had a chance to read the Brandon town plan and have a slightly little bit more assessment.
I'll second that.
Does everyone understand what we're voting on? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we will review that, we will review this in our off until, you know, we will review this and then come back with a decision to apply for the grant for, you know, continue on.
I'll say, so I wanna know who needs a paper copy of Brandon's plan. I emailed it to you, but who wants a paper copy?
I do.
I'll take one.
Kim wants one.
Okay, I'll I'll print you all.
Everyone but Vito, cause Vito just got a new printer.
I got it on my, I was gonna bring the computer.
So everybody should know that is a draft plan that you guys have. It's um, I guess a couple pieces you should consider when reading through that is your plan does not have to be exactly the same. That's a draft plan. Um, I think there's some like spelling mistakes and.
But it's pretty close.
Punctuation things, yeah, it's it's pretty close. It gives you something to go off of. It's something you could maybe use as a rubric for, well, I would change this and this and that. Just don't view it as this is exactly what ha- what it has to be.
Well, thank you very much for spending the time that you have. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, so late for your drive home.
Yeah, it's okay. Uh, one thing that would be helpful to me, and this isn't, this is also gonna be probably not satisfying for any of you. Um, the idea of me looking through your plan and saying, this is what you need to change or not change. I can't really do, cause I don't have a frame of reference for what the town wants to do. So the process I would go through with all of you for writing the plan is what are your goals? What do you wanna get out of this? What do you wanna do? And then that's the the basis for moving forward with a plan. And so just to look at the plan and say, I think you need to change this. The only way I can do that is if there's things that are like um, outside of your jurisdiction or like outside of statute that's in there. So I don't think those things are gonna be in there. So I can't really, I'm not gonna be able to tell you.
So we initially adopted this plan. We had, we had the uh, and we had an energy plan. And we went to the enhanced energy plan solely for the purpose of having a voice at a table if one ever came up. That is, that is the entire reason why we we, and we took a lot of this stuff from our existing energy plan and we incorporated it into the enhanced energy plan. But that is, that's the original reason why we um.
We're all the Dr. Barbara.
Yeah, talk to Barbara.
Or you're gonna think she walked us in it.
Barely.
We'd like to keep this community rural and still have community events, but the idea is to not have it turn into Rutland City, I think, is kind of the point of our plan.
What I would ask is if at your next meeting, you could discuss that and send me a synopsis of here's the like um, unified version of the things we wanna get out of this. And if it's just unilaterally stop development and put that, that's fine. But if there's more than that, that would be a really good point of reference for how to move forward.
I don't.
Be Hollingford the last time, where you now at Rutland City.
I don't know, maybe some of you wanted to be Hollingford.
No, I I don't think, I don't think you're, I don't think we were ever opposed to, I don't think we were ever opposed to anything. I think it was um, I recognizing the, that there are certain protected, like there are certain, certain scenic views.
We'll keep development to a minimum.
Yeah.
Right, so yeah, all those things would be great.
Yeah, okay.
And like a synopsis email, so I just have a lens to look at.
I don't, so Jeremy, I don't think our goals are gonna change.
Right, I do. Bob, you wanna repeat what you said?
What I just said now?
Yeah, I don't think everyone heard.
I don't think our, Jeremy said he want, wanted, he wanted to commit time to something where if we were gonna change our goals. And I said, I don't think we need, I don't think we plan to change our goals.
Yeah, no, I didn't say I didn't have time for that. I said I didn't have time to like, to think the whole thing through with you and then not do a plan. I can either do a plan or think things. I only have so many hours.
Yeah.
Um, through the grant.
Take two. Take four.
My kids are gonna.
You better, you better double that up because, how many kids you have? So they at least need to share a little.
Yeah, they need a reason to argue about stuff. They're like, they're hobby.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that our next meeting is um, January eighteenth of next year.
It is probably.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And we will potentially have a hearing for a subdivision, possibly. And we'll be discussing um, we'll be discussing Brandon's enhanced energy.
Maybe make our plan, you know, more, I don't know how many people be here, you know, that's the thing.
And some of it is very dry unless you're interested.
Maybe we can look to uh, what they call it dumb it down. You know, so more people would get something out of it.
I don't know. I I always thought that it was um, at home, didn't necessarily. Somebody, I'm not calling home the league.
Oh, I will.
Peanut butter and oatmeal.
Yeah. We. Here.
Are we adjourned?
I might, yeah, I might want, okay.
All need some too. Oh.
Oh, we're eating cookies.
We're eating cookies now.
We, we have a motion on the floor to eat cookies.
Yeah, the meeting is adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Bye bye.
And Ba Humbug to those who want a Ba Humbug, yes.
Well, I'm surprised you went, we now we could be, don't wanna be like work Rutland town, but we last meeting, she said you didn't want us to turn into Hollingford.
I don't wanna be like Hollingford, but maybe some of you do.
No, I want our own new power plant. I just.